Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with the Spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge one another to reach higher and farther to be the best we can be. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Ms. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mason is here. Mrs. Rowland?
Present.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Tru... here. Okay, next thing is presentations and recommendations. Presentation to retiring superintendent of public school employees. The superintendent of the board will decide over recognizing all district employees listed below who have been retiring since November 2021. Each employee will be presented with a token of the district's appreciation for all their years of service.
All right, we have fifteen or sixteen retirees and not everyone's here, but we are going to recognize them tonight. And I have several stories. I've been accused of this being a roast before, but it's not. There's some funny stories and there's some endearing stories too. I did leave a few of the comments off since it's a public meeting, so. All right, our first retiree is Ms. Vicki Bentley. So give her a big round of applause. She has been a sign interpreter for the district for twenty-two and a half years. And Vicki, I was going through all the locations that you've been. Is there a site that you have not been?
Washington.
Washington, okay. Well, come on back. We'll let you come back. So this is what we have to say about Ms. Vicki. She was always flexible when called to a different site with short notice to assist with interpreting for students or peers. So that's a really good thing, Vicki, because you got to meet all of our employees. Okay, Ms. Bentley was a vital part of Wildcat Academy. She took good care of us. She called herself the queen and she did not mind getting on to any of us and shaking your finger at them. She once admonished Mr. Harris for sitting on a table. She scolded Kimbrel for coming back late for lunch. Kimbrel? We were all scared of her. She did so many things for us. She served breakfast, covered classes during lunch, entered the door, ran the library and was the key holder to the girls' bathroom. Ms. Bentley was very protective of the teachers and students. She formed relationships with many students that were difficult to reach. Her kind spirit and motherly attitude made her a much-loved part of our school. Her protectiveness and loyalty to everyone here showed the students that they are more than a school, but were a family. And Vicki is someone who really wanted to see students that she worked with be successful. She was always willing to help and support wherever she was needed. We appreciate the time you've served with our district, Vicki, and who knows, we may call you again. Either way, they can just stay in and listen to all the other comments as we roast everyone else. Okay, next we have Ms. Rena Clyburn. Rena is a science teacher at East Middle School. She's been with PCPS for seventeen years and all of them have been at East Middle School. She has several out-of-state years of education, including Hawaii. Are you going back there for retirement? Okay, so I got a late notice today. I asked for things about our staff and the late notice today said that you're the bubble wrap teacher. They need to wrap you in bubble wrap so you won't get hurt. But I also heard that almost every time you're in the science lab, something happens. Once, she semi-flooded the orchestra room. The drains were flooded, so when she did the lab work for the day and used the drains, they backed up and ran into the orchestra room. Then one time during a staff talent show, some teachers were doing a dance in lawn chairs and Rena's lawn chair broke. And she just kept dancing her jig with her legs in the air. This year, during her retirement year, we knew it was time for retirement because she was going around the building saying, "I've lost my marbles." Well, it was the marbles for her science experiment. It's so funny. All kidding aside, Rena is a brilliant teacher who knows her content well. Every event in her classroom has a logical consequence. If a student is going to do something wrong or even right, there will be a scientific discussion brought up. Her processing skills are off the charts. She will be greatly missed, but I think I talked her into something next year at East Middle. Just a retirement reception. Give it up for Ms. Rena Clyburn. Okay, next we have Ms. Kathy Conrad. Catherine Conrad, but we all call her Kathy. She is our state reporting coordinator and she's an admin secretary to the superintendent. So that means I'm losing my person. She's been with the district for PCPS for six years and many years in twenty-two other years in the education business with a different district, but we won't let that count. You're a wildcat. Okay, so Kathy has been a warm, funny, friendly face of our new building, this building that we're in currently. Her customer service is top-notch. She makes all visitors feel welcome and usually winds up in a positive discussion and everyone winds up laughing. She never met a stranger and she talks to everybody and that's very good. She's a very helpful person, always willing to problem solve or jump in with ideas. Kathy Conrad is a vital part of our registration process. She is so knowledgeable about power school and is always so friendly and accommodating to our parents, guardians, and even our students who might be in the district in this building. She will be greatly missed during registration. And one of your friends said, "We all know that Kathy is a people person with a smiley face." Her friends say they often have to track her down for making the rounds, talking to her coworkers. She's a really good listener and a really good friend. Now, there's a couple of things that you may not know about Kathy. I learned, I did not know this, that Kathy has been known to run into things with her car and not confess it to her. And tells them, notices the damage, and then you confess. Yeah, it's a good thing he isn't here to record it though, so. Another thing that you might not know about Kathy is she has a beautiful backyard with an inviting pool. And each summer, her backyard is like a tropical paradise. And I am sure she will be spending a lot of time in that tropical paradise once she retires. Okay, so this one, Kathy still uses that old stand-in white rain hairspray. The main factors of white rain hairspray will notice a dramatic decline in demand for their product once Kathy retires.
Dollar store doesn't have any more.
Did you buy them out? No, you need to clamp it up when you're spending hours floating beside the pool. So Kathy, you know we're going to miss you and I personally am going to miss you. Kathy Conrad. Okay, next we have Ms. Celia Collins. Celia is a pre-K TA at Washington Pre-K Center. And Celia, people just came out of the rubble. Celia has quite a collection of crazy headgear. She's always wearing some silly hats and kids love it. Lots of times when I'm at the pre-K center, she has on some kind of headband. Celia is an early bird and she gets to school before most anyone and she cranks up the jams. Her crazy music can be heard filling the halls before kiddos arrives. She loves rock music and she loves it loud. Several employees told me that your nickname is Rock and Roll Grandma. So Celia's been with us just shy of twenty-six years. She was a class-size TA and a sped TA at Lincoln before going to the pre-K center. Now, I also hear that you're willing to go above and beyond for anything at the school. The annual book fair is just your baby. And everybody thinks that you're going to be coming back running the book fairs. We're expecting that. I found out that you're quite the prankster too. The entire Washington staff falls victims to her pranks. And she's often hiding things around the building. And it takes sometimes a long while for people to find everything that she's moved around. Now, Mrs. Fisher confirmed that you're quite the prankster and particularly liked to prank her. Tina will never forget the time Celia came to Assembly wearing a David Hasselhoff mask, scaring Tina half to death. Or the time that you put David Hasselhoff posters all over her office, in the kitchen, in the bathroom, and on her car. And for the record, Ms. Fisher does not like David Hasselhoff. Celia is one proud mom and grandma. She's super excited to get to meet her newest grandson for the first time this summer. How many grandkids do you have, Celia? Two grandkids. She is one of the easiest people to work with. She has a gift for putting people at ease. Many of the employees at Washington Pre-K said Ms. Collins has worked with many of their own children. One current TA at Washington said Celia was a TA when she and her sister were in school at Lincoln and has been the assistant teacher for both of her kids. So when you're working with grandkids and great-grandkids, that means you've been in it for a long time. Celia has seen many families grow up and her fun-loving personality will be remembered forever. The kids love her and the staff loves her as well. Thanks for your service, Ms. Celia.
I want to say I had Celia's children at Lincoln and they were wonderful.
I'm sure they were.
And they're still so successful. They're both doctors. And I just really enjoyed having them in my file.
Your kids are doctors, Celia? Awesome. Wonderful. Next we have Ms. Carla Fry. She's the principal at Trout. She has one out-of-state year of experience, thirty-three years in Oklahoma and twenty-two with PCPS. Carla has been a principal just about everywhere. She's been a principal intern for one year, splitting time between Union, Woodlands and Liberty. Was it more than one year? Just one year? She's principal at Woodlands, she's principal at Lincoln, she's been principal at Trout. She hasn't been to Garfield or Roosevelt, but we have some openings. Okay, I will have to tell you that I had to leave out a couple of the comments about Carla. A funny memory of Carla is one time a teacher had to give the state science test to a student who had a sign language interpreter. So the teacher had to read the test out loud. She had to read it out loud so the student could read the teacher's lips. The interpreter had to sign it and Carla was the testing monitor. So, three teachers with one kid, poor little guy, first day testing. Well, the test had lots of charts and one was some kind of comparison of what mice and humans ate. The problem was it got lost in translation. One section was mice, the next section was eating humans. So the little boy was wide-eyed and he was nervously asking the three adults in the room, "What kind of mice eat humans?" All three adults started laughing. I hope he did well on this thing. Carla's calm, cool and collected and has logical consequences for inappropriate or appropriate student behaviors. One early childhood teacher sent a little friend who was disrupting down to visit with Mrs. Fry in the office. At break, the teacher went to check on the little friend and she found her in there being the human shredder, tearing each piece of paper in the shredding bin into four pieces. That little girl wanted to go back to class right then. "I'm done. Let's go." That would be nice. The same teacher told another story. During dismissal, they were down to a dozen kids in the primary hallway and one student stepped on a live bat in the floor of the hallway. Inside of it. The teacher called for Carla, who came up with some kind of mop. Complete with fame-bearing and echolocation, she ushered it right out the door. Now, that was the bat that was frank... fame-bearing, don't pardon. Carla is a treasure trove of information about our students. She not only knows everyone's name, but she usually can tell where their parents work and about their siblings. Carla is always looking out for what is best for our students and is their best advocate. She's supportive of her staff and always backs them up. Carla can be counted upon in every situation and she will be so missed. We've got some openings. Joy Jackson. Joy is just shy of eighteen years for you. She has been a class-size, a special education and a pre-K TA at both Roosevelt and Woodlands, but has been at Lincoln since 2009 as a Title I TA. And this is what the teacher said about Joy. She's truly a blessing to have in class. She is never short for songs or stories and she can easily take a class and wing it. And if you can wing it, we know you're a true educator. She can wing it with an activity for an indoor recess or when she's covering for a teacher for a meeting. And the teachers don't even have to leave plans for you. You just take it and run with it, Joy. She will come up with a learning game, a song, or read aloud at a moment's notice. During intervention, she was always making up new games or activities to use with the kids to keep them engaged. And they love you and enjoy coming to you to learn, Ms. Joy. A fact that most may not know about Joy is she makes and sells beautiful jewelry. So we're wondering, Joy, are you willing to focus on your jewelry-making skills once you retire?
Probably not anymore than I am right now.
Well, if not, you know, we'd love to be... You're wearing it. You're sporting it tonight. You're just beautiful. Somebody said they purchased some Wildcat color jewelry from you. I didn't know that you were Abby Williams' grandmother till I saw her on the day here. I'm like, "Why are you guys here?" Joy, we certainly appreciate your service and you've really made a difference in our district. Thanks so much. Okay, next we have Ms. Betty Johnson. She is the Board of Education clerk and the admin secretary to the superintendent. Okay, so have you guys been paying attention? That's two. My only two admin secretaries are both retiring. So Betty has been with the district for thirty-two years. She started in 1990 as a TA at Woodlands, then became a TA at the kindergarten center while it was still at the...
Martin Mansion.
She became secretary at the kindergarten center. She became a secretary at the Board of Education office and then board clerk and an admin assistant to the superintendent. And I will have to tell you, Betty knows all. Any question anyone has, Betty is able to answer or know where to find the answer. And she can format anything. Anytime we get a report from anyone and the formatting is messed up, we all try to fix it and then we just give up and send it to Betty. She sends it back in a few minutes via email and it's magically formatted. If any of us has a question about Excel, Word, email, Google Docs, we always ask Betty. I often will ask her, "How'd you know that, Betty?" You know what she replies? "I Googled it." Now she has trained me to Google the answers that I need on formatting and questions with software. I've actually been able to figure out a few things now with the help of Google. I figure I better get used to it. Betty's a planner and we jokingly call her Spreadsheet Betty. Because she creates timelines and to-do lists on spreadsheets. Watch out Carl. Carl's her husband over there. Carl actually told me on the way down here that she's created a spreadsheet for your next few weekends of things that you have to... She keeps everything at school organized from spirit night shirts, service pins, to policies, procedures and reports. You name it, she has it. And she has been creating a detailed binder called "That's All Folks Preparing for Retirement" for at least two years now? Okay, it is detailed, as you can imagine. It's full of spreadsheets. Betty is prim and proper and very professional at work, but sometimes she has stories that just shock us. For Bria, just out of the ordinary for Betty.
You're not going to tell one, are you?
I am not going to bring up the story about the elevator on the Office Girls trip to work. I will tell you, Betty is a rule follower to the T. She is our go-to resource for any questions. She's an organizer and she's a worker bee. And I imagine we'll have her on speed dial for a while once she retires. Class dates June 30th. Betty and her husband Carl are relocating to Edmond to be closer to family. Okay, so now all I'm at is Kathy's still in here? Yes, Kathy's still in here. Okay, so I want to take this opportunity to say that both of my administrative assistants are retiring this year, Betty and Kathy. And yes, it takes two to keep me in line. What's that say? They're both leaving at once? Kind of scary, but on a serious note, these two ladies have had my back through thick and thin. And since I've been superintendent, this is your five, feels like fifty, we've had lots of challenges. We've had teacher lockout, we've had COVID and then all kinds of other things we won't talk about. They are always very professional and helpful ladies. They're funny and friendly and they have some of the best stories. Betty and Kathy are both class acts and deserve nothing but a wonderful retirement. Somehow, I'll make it without you, but I want you to know that I will miss you and love you both. Next we have Ms. Julie Lawrence. Forty years as an Oklahoma educator and every one of those forty years have been with PCPS. She taught English for six years, which I really didn't know that. Is that correct? And the remaining... Did you teach English at all?
One and a half.
Okay, so one and a half, so the rest thirty-eight and a half years, she was our Spanish teacher. Julie Lawrence or Senora Lawrence has developed traditions at Pohai we hope to never see leave, such as the students writing teachers positive notes each semester in none other than Spanish. Can anybody read it? We can always count on her for an honest, professional and student-centered opinion. If you know Julie Lawrence, you probably know she has a stern exterior. If you were one of her longtime colleagues, you will also know that behind that stern, rule-following exterior, she has a heart of gold. And she does. For example, when Pohai needed an NHS National Honor Society sponsor mid-year, Julie stepped into the spot because she knew that the club was important to our students. She devoted extra time and energy to that club at a time when our personal life was very stressful. She believed in the importance of NHS for our students and was willing to make some sacrifices at home to keep the club afloat until a more permanent sponsor could be found. Okay, do we have a sponsor for next year?
We do not.
Hey, Mr. Dan. Julie has also stepped in this year and helped us out as the concert hall coordinator, now that we are back to having concert, and she has done a remarkable job. So I've got to spend a lot of time with Ms. Julie at the concert hall. Of course, with Julie as the coordinator, you can imagine that all of our events run like a well-oiled machine. We love her willingness to help and the desire to put our students first. In fact, we think she may be returning as our concert hall coordinator upon retirement and we are glad she will still be a part of our PCPS family. So it's like you're not even leaving. We appreciate your service, Julie. Thank you so much. Okay, next we have Mr. Chris Littlecook. He is our Title VI coordinator and he has been with PCPS for sixteen years. Now, I have to tell you, his wife Mindy's here. Where's Mindy? Oh, there she is. Okay, so she retired last year. I think Chris saw her having lots of fun, so here he is. Mr. Littlecook has been a longstanding leader for student advocacy for our Native American students. Many students often reached out to him for academic and social support at school. He has been a student favorite staff member as long as we can remember. Now, I did not know this about Mr. Littlecook. He's an excellent Native American storyteller and a Native American dancer, but he's also an amazing painter. Does anybody else know that? Okay, when they began the Native American Art Museum at Pohai, which is a ceiling tile painting project for students and staff to celebrate Native American culture, Mr. Littlecook's tile was so awesome. At first glance, it's a person who is proud of his truck, but it is the shadow of the truck and the individual that shows the true spirit within. Anyway, I have pictures. There it is. That's a ceiling tile at the Native American History Museum at Pohai. This is Littlecook. That is awesome. Chris has fostered an excellent collaboration with PCPS and our Native American community. And we appreciate your service, Chris, and you will be missed. And I'm sure you'll come back for Powell's that we host. Well, I hear Dollar Tree's sold out. Okay, next we have Diane Meyer-Worthy. For seventeen years, she's our occupational therapist, house at Union. And Diane, did you know this? That your colleagues were actually looking through your desk last week and found some pictures and were having a really good laugh. Diane, you're not even gone and they are going through your desk. Something that is always amazing to the staff is that you and the physical therapists have a water day and get everyone in a pool outside. And they sent me a little emoji, it's like, "Ah." Lots of fun for our kids, though. Diane is such an amazing woman to look up to. Her fun-loving attitude truly helps our littles enjoy learning and practicing their skills every day. Now, another one of your friends said that she's been a really good OT for the district. She has good experiences coming from the Enid State School. And she's such a fabulous children's therapist. She has so much energy and excitement and compassion and she cares with her whole heart for these kids. And your colleagues say they care with their whole heart for you as well. She's a joy to be around. She has positively impacted so many young lives throughout her career and her students and team will miss her. And Ms. Jim McKay sent you a message. She is a good friend, loves her family and enjoys life. I loved working with her and I love her. We're truly going to miss you, Diane. Okay, next we have Ms. Jan Miller. She is a district assistant treasurer and she's been... She is a district assistant treasurer, and she's been with us for eighteen years. So that's three people in the board office that are retiring. And somebody said, "Uh, okay, everybody's retiring." I said, "Look around, we're all old, it's gonna happen." Okay, so we all know what Jan can do upon retirement. Two words: salsa and walk. She can make a food truck with just those two items and drive by the Board of Education every day when she retires, just to serve us. And we'll pay, okay? We don't pay now, when you break in, but we'll pay. Jan has always been willing to help out in any way she can. One of our employee's son had worked for the district and had fingerprints on file. He had left the district and gone to another job that was requiring fingerprints. They told him if he could get them from the district, they would accept them. He asked several people to help him, but to no avail. And Jan saw him in the lobby and said, "Hey, can I help you?" And he said what he was looking for. She said, "Let me see what I can do." Well, she got the fingerprints and that employee's son went home and said, "I want you to know that that pretty lady helped me get my fingerprints." And he also said, "She's pretty on the inside and outside." You can count on Jan to get in there and get the job done, whether it's organizing food for meetings at the beginning of the year, or helping with the Teacher of the Year events. She is certainly a worker bee. And I have some things that probably people don't know about Jan. I didn't even know. You went to college on a basketball and volleyball scholarship. Okay, why didn't we have you do some leg coaching? Their volleyball team went to Nationals in Maryland her sophomore year, and she went to Cali County. Uh, something funny, she likes to drive fast on ice and snow to see if she can slide sideways. It'll make her laugh just to think about doing it. So that's where those ruts came from. Now, Jan is a class act. She's poised and conducts herself in a calm and professional manner, and this is reflected in her work. She has amazing style and a sassy, friendly demeanor. We will miss her greatly. Thank you. Okay, not here tonight is Mr. Waitscott. He teaches high school English. He has sixteen years... Oh, I knew that, high school science, I don't know what I'm saying. He's high, I knew that. He's high school science, all sixteen years at PCPS. And I found out today that years ago, Mr. Scott decided to play a joke on a couple of our new science teachers and told them that they had to complete a portfolio as part of being a first-year teacher. Okay, that's not funny. They come by threat. Well, the department chair let the new teachers in on the joke. And one of these new teachers went to Mr. Scott's room during lunch and actually began yelling at him about how she didn't appreciate the joke and how other teachers were so stressed out, and that one was even leaving the profession. And he's looking at her, and then she said, "Gotcha." He insists he knew she wasn't serious, but we all really think he's really worried. Then there was the time he brought out a banjo and started playing in the hallway a few years ago. He's just super talented. Uh, he interjects his life experiences into his lessons, and he uses everything for a teachable moment. He tells his kids, "So remember, when you find yourself in this situation..." And then he'll continue the lecture. He just makes everything relevant, which makes an imprint on the brain for our students. Uh, Mr. Scott has always shown a tough exterior, uh, but he has a heart of gold for students, and I can make him laugh. Not getting people going. Uh, he will be greatly missed. Okay, next we have Ms. Debbie Shelton, who is not here either. Thirty-one years of experience, twenty-nine years with PCPS. She was the librarian at Liberty for eight years, then at Pohai. Sadly, Debbie's mother passed away last week, so that's not why she's not here tonight. I heard from her last night. At the beginning of this school year, uh, our wrestling coach, Coach Rollo, it's actually Coach Roland, we call him Rollo, was helping make student IDs. He kept looking at Ms. Shelton, then he'd look at her, and then he'd look away. And you have to know Rollo, he's kind of halfway bashful and halfway not, too. So finally, he, it appeared he wanted to ask her something. He said, "Were you the librarian at Liberty?" Because he thought he remembered her from when he attended school there. She told him that she was, and they all laughed because now Rollo has kids of his own at the high schools. So, hey, here's your student at Liberty, and now she's teaching the student's students. Uh, one teacher said, "If a librarian's work is to inspire others to read, Debbie has done that a thousand times over for both the staff and the students." I love that she's always sending us, both staff and students, books she thinks will like, or suggestions of what to look for as we get ready for the next book. She is a kind and generous with her time and loves people in the very best way. She has always been the kind, smiling, helpful face of Pohai Library and the Pohai and the district will miss her. So next we have Brett Smith. This is some trivia. Okay, so Brett actually retired on November 1 of 2021, which was thirty-four years to the day. He actually got hired on November 1, and I'll have to count back. I think it was in eighty-seven? Eighty-six, okay. So Brett Smith has always been an individual that we knew we could call for guidance or direction. He was very helpful and informative with safe schools. And then someone else said, "After all these years, he certainly knew every nook and cranny of our over one million square feet of property." He oversaw the bond projects from the 2015 bond election, which included the concert hall, the weight training facility, the new football locker room, and the press box, to name a few. Uh, now, I said this about you because everybody knows it's true that it's ever worked around you. He is a consummate gentleman. I mean, I have never had the opportunity to know such a gentleman. If he took me to a job site, he'd try to help me in the car, and I just wanted to slap him a way out, you know? He would open doors, help me get in the vehicle, hold your elbow, help me step up. And I'd just stare at him. So finally, I just gave up, and I just finally gave in, letting him take care of me. But one time, we were in a training, and he had on a jacket, and I was so cold, I was shivering. He took off his jacket and draped it over my shoulders. Well, I gladly gave in that time. Oh, so what he's doing in his spare time, he has father and son's barbecue cooking. And I've got a picture. There's Brett right in there. You guys out of Motley Crue or what? So you are enjoying retirement. So you do a lot of barbecuing with this brother, Tony, who's here. Tony's our maintenance director, so they spend lots of time, so that we know what you're doing on your free time. Enjoying life. He, every time I ask him, I ask him how he likes it, and it's, he says, "It's wonderful." Brett has so much institutional knowledge of our district. We still call him often. You just thought you retired. Yeah, if not more. We appreciate all you do, Brett, and we certainly miss you. Thanks for your service. Okay, next we have Ms. Nancy Taylor. Forty-one years, all with PCPS. She's been at Union, Liberty, Garfield, Washington. She taught some at East Middle School and Union, and West Middle School and Union. So forty, out of forty years, thirty-five have been at least part-time at Union. So you're a Union Wildcat, you've been Union Bulldog. Uh, Union was built in nineteen eighty-seven, and Nancy was able to have input in designing the music room at Union. So she is responsible for built-in risers, soundproofing, and a storage costume closet added, thanks to your input. In nineteen eighty-eight, she began teaching music full-time at Union and continued there for four years. She then volunteered to go to East Mid-High at the time and teach seventh-grade chorus the first year, and eighth-grade chorus the next two years, and worked with Carol Green, who taught eighth and ninth-grade chorus. During her career, she had fifteen different principals. I was one of those fifteen, and I will tell you, she had to break every single one of us in. We had to know the Nancy Taylor way of teaching music and performances. And they were awesome. One of her highlights as a teacher was in the year 2000, when she took Union third and fourth grade students and teachers to a buffalo ranch south of Ponca City. Cable One TV videotaped the students singing "Home on the Range" with live buffalo, horses, and a covered wagon in the background. The video was selected to be in the world's largest concert, a music educators national conference performance on TV. Nancy's known for her fabulous concerts from Veterans Day programs, holiday programs, talent shows, and spring programs. The students sang, danced, and had amazing costumes. A former student said, "I was lucky to have Mrs. Taylor as a music teacher for third and fourth grade." I loved... Oh, this former student is actually one of our employees now. "I loved all the programs and talent shows I was able to be a part of. Great memories from those days. I know she has had a wonderful career, and her students were very lucky to have her as her teacher." Nancy Taylor is that rare individual who combines her passion for perfection with compassion for her students. The result has been a generation of students who reflected excellence in music with a sense of true joy. Thank you so much, Nancy Taylor. Next we have Mr. Michael Webb. He is currently our school nurse and COVID coordinator that hasn't gotten a lot of action since about mid-February, and none of us are sad about that. He has been, in the twelve years he's been with us, he's been a fifth-grade teacher at Roosevelt, a science teacher at West Middle School, computer ed at Pohai, I forgot about that, and nurse and COVID coordinator. So I will have to tell you that we consider Mr. Webb a jack-of-all-trades. He has been a programmer. He, well, he's still a programmer. He's a farmer. He's a nurse. He's a gardener. He's a lead teacher. He's a team leader. And he's a MacGyver kind of guy who can fix anything. For those of you that are young, MacGyver was a television show. We've never heard you sing, uh, but we don't doubt that you can probably do it. So a performance is coming on, right? He loves his birds and squirrels that he can watch on his security camera. He even built a monarch butterfly garden at West. Since he has been downtown as COVID coordinator, his office is in the HR department. HR will miss the smell of his daily bone broth diet and all of his bits of information, both useful and useless. He can repair anything. Just mention something you need, and Michael will give you the details. He's often here at 6:30 a.m. and I'm here, and we're always trying to strategize on how to fix something. Uh, and he can tell you how to do it. Okay, so as a superintendent, I've made some really good decisions as superintendent, and not so good decisions as superintendent. However, one of the best decisions I have ever made with the support of the board is to make Nurse Webb our COVID coordinator. The HR directors during COVID, both Curtis Layton and Jennifer Dye and I, were meeting ourselves, coming and going in the height of COVID. There were times when we were here until midnight, trying to catch up with quarantines and isolation documentation. When Nurse Webb took over, we could get back to school business somewhat relatively. You are my hero, Michael, that's all I got to say. Even though he's not been too busy as of late with COVID, he is still helping with nursing duties and staying busy. Now, how are any of us gonna know how to repair anything once you leave? What color? You got your hat? Okay, so Michael has retired from ConocoPhillips. He's retired from the Ponca City High School, and now he's retiring from PCPS. So, okay, Michael, with three retirements, I'm assuming you have all kinds of hidden pockets of money. I haven't known a little bit about this assumption, but I'm just gonna leave it at that. If COVID ramps up its ugly head again, you will be on speed dial. Thanks for all you've done, Michael. So this group of educators represent three hundred sixty-eight years of service dedicated to the students of Ponca City Public Schools. It also represents three hundred sixty-eight years of experience that are going to be walking out these doors after the last day of school. Some of them will get walked on out. Each retiree is part of Team PCPS, and you should always remember, once a Wildcat, always a Wildcat. Thanks for giving a huge part of your lives to hold that line for the Ponca City students. We appreciate you all.
Next on the agenda is a presentation of Employee of the Month and Prince of Education Awards. These are from the Vay Employee of the Month and the Prince of Education Awards. Certified Employee of the Month is Sheila South, Special Education Teacher at Union Elementary.
Okay, this says, "Sheila South is one of our special education teachers, teaching in a self-contained classroom at Union Elementary. She regularly models the Wildcat way for students, paraprofessionals, and other colleagues. Sheila exhibits a strong work ethic by constantly working hard to find creative ways to meet her students' many significant needs. Every student in her classroom has moderate to severe special education needs, and she ensures she is designing lessons and activities to address each individual need in appropriate ways. She seeks professional development opportunities as she strives to always improve her practice for the benefit of her students. She demonstrates her leadership abilities in the way she structures her classroom, thinking outside the box when utilizing the paraprofessionals in the most beneficial way based upon each of their strengths. Sheila is disciplined in the way she balances her classroom duties, meeting IEP deadlines, and planning individualized instruction for each student. She competes with herself, always working to find solutions for problems as they arise and expecting positive outcomes. She chooses her attitude when faced with difficult situations or conversations. She also models a professional attitude for her students and classroom staff. She has been faced with new challenges this year that would have been easy to complain about, but she stepped up to the plate and found ways to address those challenges head-on. Sheila is the epitome of a team player. She demonstrates teamwork on a daily basis with her classroom paraprofessionals, students' families, and colleagues. She fills in for other teachers without hesitation and collaborates with teachers at other school sites to provide support and strategies from a different perspective. Sheila isn't afraid to seek input from others and is always open to feedback, and will immediately implement suggestions and support without hesitation. She goes above and beyond for PCPS and does it with a smile on her face. She is very deserving of being recognized as a Certified Employee of the Month. Thank you."
Next Employee of the Month, uh, Support Employee of the Month, and it's Renee Tarber, Finance Secretary at East Middle School.
I'm Keith Crocker, I'm the principal at East Middle School. Renee Tarber.
Darren Hardy says, "The magic is doing the simple things repeatedly and long enough to ignite the miracle of the compound effect." You've probably seen Mr. Boyer at a Poh High event with his camera. I know I have. In fact, I can't remember an event that I've been to that I haven't seen with Mr. Boyer. Night after night, hour after hour, picture after picture, Mr. Boyer's simple act of kindness repeats itself. Until you witness what his efforts produce, you might miss out on this magic. His enormous portfolio is open and shared with the community. Students feel valued and appreciated. Parents feel connected, and the community takes pride. Magic takes time and sacrifice. I can only imagine the hours and costs that Mr. Boyer invested in this effort. What I do know is that his selfless act is a wonderful example for us all and a reminder that great things come from simple acts of kindness. Thank you, Mr. Boyer, for supporting our students. We appreciate your service to our school and community. Thank you."[669.62][669.62](APPLAUSE).
They're getting better and better. They're just amazing. Because love to practice with PCPS.[673.62][673.62](LAUGHTER).
Okay, if all those award winners would go out in the hall and have Chrissy take a picture. Okay, since we don't have any public comments, we're going to move on to Superintendent's report with potential board discussion. First one, Let Us Lady of Update.
Let Us Lady of Update. We'll talk about some things that are on the Capitol front. Last week, there was just not a lot of activity. Now lawmakers have until Friday, May 27th, Sena Dia, to do three things. They have to finish the state budget. They have to confirm or reject people nominated by the governor for various positions, and they have to conclude remaining negotiations on policy bills that were amended in their opposite chamber. So I think I've talked to you about this. When a bill returns to the Chamber of Origin with amendments, it's either rejected and it has to go to a conference committee or approved and sent to the governor. And sometimes these conference committees are unclear, behind the scenes, gathering of stakeholders, legislators, who mostly agree with the final language for a bill. And there's two reminders that I want you to remember about the 23 budget. 10.4 billion with an increase of 167.4 million after the December number was approved for appropriations by the Board of Equalization in February, including both certified and non-certified funds available. So you've probably seen the commercials that we have, a huge surplus in our budget in Oklahoma. 1.1 billion approximately in cash from various sources was included in the 10.4 billion. All legislative and executive branch leaders have indicated they would use this 1.1 billion for one time rather than recurring purposes. So what's that mean as far as teacher salaries? Teacher salaries are recurring. So there's a bill that I'm going to talk to you about that has some amendments with it, or the title is stricken, that they will use to address the teacher shortfall. Even though I'm hearing from good sources that there might not be money for reoccurring costs, I'm continuing to tell our local story, and that's our need for qualified teachers, support staff, and additional funds to cover increased costs due to inflation, not only for our staff but for the school. Our fuel costs, our bill costs are a lot higher than they've normally been. And also, we'd like to add some innovative programs if we could add or find qualified teachers. So here are some bills that were amended or rejected. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but this is the big one. This is the Oklahoma Education Lottery Trust Fund that exceeds 75 million to be deposited into the Teacher Empowerment Fund, and this goes to supplement costs for teachers with lead and master certificates. Now, the funds are matching funds that will be on a first-come, first-served basis, and if you'll remember, in the governor's state address, he mentioned six-figure salaries for teachers. So this is the mechanism to allow for that, but schools are still wondering where they're going to come up with the matching funds. House Bill 4387 has been combined with 4388. They're all one bill. It's the funding mechanism for 4388. We're going to continue to watch that. Another bill that was amended is House Bill 3564, and it establishes a scholarship incentive to incentivize students to become teachers. And I have talked to you about this before, but basically, it is $20,000, $4,000 a year for five years if Oklahoma high school graduate commits to going through school, being a teacher, and they get a $4,000 a year stipend for five years. Then they get an additional $5,500 in scholarships. So that's $25,500 for teachers. Okay, so let's think about that. Assuming it takes them four years to get through college, that's four years, and then five years to work for us for a teacher, that's nine years before that ever pays out. So we need help next month. We need help now. But that is a start, so we're going to take that. We don't know what's been amended or rejected on that. Senate Bill 615, which I've talked to all of you about, modifies the sex education curriculum to include sexual orientation and gender identity. This bill originally was the curriculum that if any of our counselors used it with any of our students, it had the superintendent had to approve, and parents could inspect it, and parents can inspect any of our curriculum as is. The bill was amended to define biological sex as male or female as identified at birth. It requires that pre-K through 12 public schools and public charters will designate restrooms and changing facilities that are intended to accommodate multiple individuals as follows. So all male restrooms, all female restrooms. The bill specifies that individuals not using their assigned restroom have to have consequence, but there's no details in that. I would imagine that would just go in our student disciplinary policy. And it also imposes a 5% reduction in state aid to schools who violate. I checked on this about 3 o'clock, and there had been no movement on this bill. Now, I text Senator Coleman and Representative Latrell, and they say it's still moving forward as has I don't know, who's not a representative but one of our former teachers. So another bill that was amended, Senate Bill 1530-PY, modifies the teacher and leader evaluation system, and I'm just going to give you the high points on this. It keeps a state uniform, research-based system in all schools. It removes the professional learning focus, which is a focus that's decided upon by the teacher and the principal each year in which the teacher wants to grow. It eliminates cumbersome state department of education reporting, which Dr. Hawkins is working on now, and it redefines career teacher to a teacher who has completed three or more consecutive complete school years as a teacher in one school district under a written, continuing, or temporary contract. Now, look, I'm not going to read this to you, but right now, here is the current career teacher laws, career status teacher laws. This came into effect when TLE was first voted in several years ago. We had a waiver last year due to COVID, but there are so many ifs, ands, and buts. We definitely want the language to return to career teacher who's completed three consecutive complete school years. And on the consent agenda tonight is our evaluation tool, which is the Marzano Observation Format, for you to consider for renewal, and we don't want to throw the baby out with the backwater, so we've been focusing on Marzano strategies ever since I can remember in this district, and this is 34 years for me. So we want to stick with that, but if we didn't have to do a lot of this cumbersome details, that would certainly help, and I feel confident our teachers would appreciate that as well.[1180.12][1180.12](LAUGHTER). And he has that, shaking his head. So this is a good bill. Right now, I think the tide is off, but it is coming to fruition. Senate Bill 1671 talks about students requiring to have instruction on the Holocaust. The State Department will create the curriculum, and we'll see where that goes. Senate Bill 1726 adds commercial gross to statutes limiting how close medical marijuana dispensaries can be to schools, and I don't know what's going on with that. We'll see. Here are bills that have been signed by the governor since our last board meeting, effective public ed. Senate Bill 1307, I'm going to talk to you about this. This is authored by Senator Coleman, where you put the hotline for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline on our student ID badges. That goes into effect, has been signed into law July 1, 2023. The governor has signed it. Senate Bill 1119 removes the 270-hour clock-hour limitation on the time our adjunct teachers may teach per semester in a classroom. So basically, this gives us more flexibility with adjunct teachers. I think we just have one that we've adjuncted, don't we, Jennifer? So it's just for a couple of hours each day. So now there's unlimited time for adjunct professors. House Bill 3658 removes the OGET requirement for all pathways for teacher certification. That was effective the day it was signed, so it is already in effect. And Senate Bill 1147 allows the State Board of Education to develop rules if courses on aviation are eligible for non-elective academic credit toward meeting graduation requirements. And our mayor actually sent us a grant, maybe it was late Friday, on some aviation curriculum, and with our new STEM academy, this will be really helpful. One of our teachers is very interested in teaching some aeronautic courses, so that goes into effect November 1 of 2022. We have Senate Bill 1631. It creates a two-year pilot mentor program for our new teachers. It has a 1.8 million fiscal impact. Selected members, our selected mentors have five years' experience. They receive a one-time stipend of $3,000 if funding is available. We do have mentors for our first-year teachers this year, certainly not a $3,000 stipend, and so we'll learn more about what if funding is available needs. More bills that have been signed in by the governor since our last meeting, oh, they launched. Modifications to the transfer bill. So this is a new one that we talked about this morning, Senate Bill 1238. It allows transfer students to be in virtual education program and removes the requirement that they attend one hour on campus. So basically, well, and we talked about this morning, if you live in, as Ms. Rowan said, you could live in southeastern Oklahoma and be part of Ponca City Virtual Academy. The only problem is, we're going to have to learn more about those rules and about the legislation, because our students come in, we meet with them, they test in the building. Yes. Yes, it does come into effect this summer, July 1, so we've got to learn some more about that. I would imagine we'll hear more about that at our COSA meeting. House Bill 3038 has to do with open transfers, and if you'll remember, well, they're not open anymore, it's just our transfer policy. There's all kinds of caveats to this. Now, it's been added that it allows the district to accept any brother or sister of a transfer student regardless of capacity if we give preference to sibling transfers. Requires the district to accept the transfer of a child whose parent or guardian is a district employee regardless of capacity. Formerly, it was just our certified employees. Now, it gives preference to our support employees, too, to remember support employees. It also allows a receiving district to give priority to a student transfer regardless of capacity if the student was a resident student for at least three years but moved out. So let's say four years ago, somebody was a resident here for three years and they moved to Blackwell. They can come back, so we can give priority to those students. This transfer bill is a moving target. It is all about school choice, so we are constantly updating our policy, and I imagine we'll have one to bring to you next month. And it also clarifies that they automatically continue to attend the school they transferred to after their first year, so they don't have to reapply. It's effective, May 4, 2022. So our principals have recently updated their transfer information. There was a governor veto on a bill, and that was Senate Bill 1429, and this would have allowed the State Board of Education to grant an alternative teaching certificate to someone with a master's degree, and it would also exempt them from taking the OGET. I will have to find out more about why he vetoed that bill, but that was just last week, so I don't know too much about that. Any questions on legislation and where we are? Okay, I've tried to keep you updated. Now, I'm going to give you some staffing updates. These are open positions as of today at 3:15 p.m. I have to stop somewhere. So we had kind of a good day. We filled three or four positions today with no resignations, so a lot of times, we take one step forward and two steps back. So secondary and district positions. We need a Title VI coordinator replacing, we just retired. We have interviews tomorrow, so we have some really, really good candidates. We need a SPED math teacher at Poh High. We could combine some classes. We're taking a hard look at our numbers. We need an English/psychology teacher at Poh High. We're taking a look at numbers. This teacher teaches more psychology than English, so we could probably absorb the English into other English classes, but it's likely that we'll need a psychology teacher. We need an art teacher at Poh High. We need a softball coach at Poh High. Interviews are possibly Thursday. We need a district strength and conditioning coach. That's in athletics, housed at Poh High. We need a district assistant band director. That's with fine arts, and we have interviews Wednesday. We've got lots of applicants. And we need an FACS teacher at East Middle School. FACS stands for payment and sumer science. You may know it as HOMET. It is a career tech program, but guys, there are no career tech teachers. It is tough to get teachers in career tech. So we are looking at that position, about making it a health and nutrition class. We have a wonderful qualified applicant, but who's not career tech certified, so we're taking a look at that. We need a math teacher at East Middle School, too. And earlier today, we needed a severe and profound at Poh High, but filled it, so that was a great thing for us today. We also need a counselor at West Middle School. You know, we have our response counselors. We're going to have a big counselor meeting, well, not with the counselors, but internal admin, and look at the counselors that we have and look about how we can position our counselors to lever dog kids more effectively. Now, these are open positions at elementary. Did we fill two today?
Yeah.
It's been fast and furious. We need a fourth-grade teacher at Garfield. We need a SPED resource teacher at Landon. We need a pre-K teacher at Washington Pre-K. We had an offer on the table, can she decline because it would cost... We need a district strength and conditioning coach. That's in athletics, housed at Poe High. We need a district assistant band director. That's with fine arts. And we have interviews Wednesday. We've got lots of applicants. And we need an F.A.C.S. teacher at East Middle School. F.A.C.S. stands for payment in consumer science. You may know it as SOMEC. It is a career tech program, but guys, there are no career tech teachers. It is tough to get teachers in career tech. So, we are looking at that position, about making it a health and nutrition class. We have a wonderful qualified applicant, but who's not career tech certified. So, we're taking a look at that. We need a math teacher at East Middle School, too. And earlier today, we needed a severe and profound at Poe High, but filled it. So, that was a great thing for us today. We also need a counselor at West Middle School. You know, we have our response counselors. We're going to have a big counselor meeting. Well, not with the counselors, but internal admin. And look at the counselors that we have and look about how we can position our counselors to lever dog kids more effectively. Now, these are open positions elementary. Did we fill two today? It's been, it's been fast and furious. We need a fourth grade teacher at Garfield. We need a sped resource teacher at Lincoln. We need a pre-K teacher at Washington Pre-K. We had an offer on the table and she declined because it would cost too much to move. We need a principal at Roosevelt Elementary. We had interviews last Thursday and Friday. We need a principal at Trout Elementary, and same thing. So, this, this, when I was working on this last night, it was pretty full. So, we made some major headway today. We have some new directors or principals for consideration. On the board personnel report tonight is Dorian Carter-Robrias. And he is our new band director, full of life and energy. I think I'm real excited for you to meet him. Also, we have offered to a principal for Garfield Elementary, and that's Laura Glawaki. It did not make the board agenda, so it will be pending board approval. So, that's where we are as far as staffing. Any questions there?
With the family consumer science, the candidate that you have, what did it take to get that person certified?
Well, we could get her emergency certified. Here's the deal. We're looking at this person to coach for us as well. And there are some really rigid guidelines on career tech. And you have to be in the classroom for six periods a day. So, she couldn't coach or she couldn't get a plan period. So...
And in addition, they have to have the club that goes with that. And you have to attend some events and it would be difficult to do all of the training.
So, we're considering our options. All right, for the first time in two years, no COVID report. Yay. Non-existent.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. And a motion is required for the approval of the consent agenda as printed or as amended. Board members may, however, call for a separate vote on any or all items listed on the consent agenda. Number one is agenda with commentary. Number two, minutes from the April 11, 2022 regular board meeting and contracts agreements under $10,000. So, do I have a motion?
Very much agree. I can vouch.
Second. Ms. Rowland.
Hi.
Ms. Truitt. Ms. Riley. Ms. Newsom. Ms. Zimmerstein.
Action items and a motion required, number six. Consider and take action on the following district financial reports description.
Should we approve that? We discussed them all. Finance, a good meeting.
You don't want me to read to these?
We're discussing.
Okay, all right.
One second.
Rowland's nice to us.
He's off the quiet right now. Off the vote, Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Ms. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Ms. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Number two, board to consider and take action upon a resolution authorizing the leasing of certain real property to the K County Public Buildings Authority and authorizing the president, clerk, and superintendent to execute any and all documents related to the ground lease agreement and the transaction. Do we vote on these individual?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, do I have a motion for that for number two? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Ms. Truitt. Aye. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Ms. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Number three, board to consider and take action upon a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a sublease agreement whereby the K County Public Buildings Authority will sublease certain real property and improvements thereto to the district and authorizing and directing the president, clerk, superintendent to execute any and all documents related to the sublease agreement and the transaction.
These agenda items just give us the authority to act in the way issue our lease agreement warrants. So, I don't have to have a special meeting or wait for a...
Okay, do I have a motion for number three?
Three.
In one second.
Ms. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Ms. Truitt.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Okay, number four, vote to approve or disapprove resolution for schools and libraries universal services, which is E-RAY, for the 2022-2023. Do I have a motion? Commentary on it. This resolution authorized filing of the Form 471 application for funding your 2022-2023 as a payment of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services. Ryan Dooley will answer questions.
We have some meetings tomorrow.
Motion number one.
Second.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Ms. Truitt.
Aye.
Ms. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Okay, number five, consideration and take action on the following contracts and agreements. A, agreement with Aspen Custom Electronics for audiovisual equipment at West Middle School. Aspen Custom Electronics will provide all audiovisual equipment and installation to replace existing diva projector at West Middle School. The total cost is $11,688.08. Do I?
You got all those.
All those. We do them all together, okay. Number B, agreement with Brandy Odd. Okay, CC, that's SLP, to provide speech and language services for the 2022-2023 school year. Okay, Ms. Brandy Odd, CC, and SLP, I guess that's their, because she's a specialized, or licensed. Okay, in the program, will provide speech and language services for students enrolled in Funk City Public Schools as indicated by parental consent and school criteria. The district will identify the students who need the services and shall approve each individual situation as provided for under state and federal regulations. The total cost of the agreement is up to $78,500 for up to four days per week for the 2022-2023 school year. Amy Schwartz will answer questions if we need it. Any questions? Okay, call for the vote. I mean, no call for motion?
No, we need to go all the way for A to Z.
Okay, I'm getting used to that. Okay, number C.
You've got to go all the way to Judy. Throw it to 100, you all the way to B. It's up to you.
Okay, agreement for Judy Cardwell. And she's also licensed speech pathologist to provide speech and language services for the 2022-2023 school year. And this, Ms. Judy, the total cost of the agreement is $95,200 for the 2022-2023 school year.
Now, Rockton, Mr. Riley had a really good question about this. He wondered what the difference in the price is. One is up to four days a week. The other is five days a week and a lot more experience. Judy has a lot more experience.
Okay, okay, number D, agreement with Clinco LLC for boring holes for electrical conduit and wires at Poe High. The cost of it, Clinco, to do this is $12,000. And Adam will answer questions if we have any. Okay, E, agreement with Curtis Restaurant Supply for a new cafeteria serving line at Lincoln Elementary. The cost of this is $31,658.92. And Adam will answer questions on this one. F, agreement with Ed Skills LLC for English language learners in well support services. The cost for this, this is for the next, this next school year, the 2022-2023 school year. And the cost is $11,220. Okay, has agreement with EF High School Exchange Year for 2022-2023 academic year foreign exchange student. It doesn't look like there's a cost.
No, there's no cost.
There's no cost, okay. H, agreement with ERDT Share High School Exchange Program for the 2022-2023 academic year foreign exchange student. I think the one student's from Italy and the other one is from Germany.
Correct.
I, agreement with Frontline Education for absence and time solution and proactive recruiting software. The cost of this is $36,938.82. Agreement with Galaxy Business Equipment Incorporated for district copiers. And the cost, well, the cost is $3,618.51 per month or $43,422.12. Black and white copies will be...
Point 004.
Each. I thought, yeah, I started saying that pretty cheap. And each color copy will be 0.045 each. Still pretty cheap. Okay, K, agreement with Gallup Incorporated for teacher insight and principal insight. And the cost of this for the 2022-23 school year is $15,000. Agreement with Game Time to repair borders and replace mold on existing playgrounds at Union Elementary, Trout Elementary, and Washington Pre-K. The cost of this is $50,114.58. M, agreement with Learning Sciences International for eye observation renewal for the 2022-2023 school year. And the cost of this is $19,830.
This is our evaluation tool.
All right, okay. N, did you have questions?
No, I was just making a comment that that's a good press for software. It actually went down. Not much. It went down for sure.
There we go, man. Program agreement with Oklahoma State Regions for higher education, 2022-23. Oklahoma Teacher Connection and Teacher Oklahoma.
This is our original for TPC for students.
And there's no cost to that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Agreement with PageMaster Website Design and Development for website services for 2022-23, 2023. And the cost will be $29 per hour, up to 600 hours. And the total cost of the agreement is estimated to be $17,400 for the 2022-2023 school year.
As needed. And Christie and Chris take on a lot of that, those website duties. So, it will be real.
P, agreement with Power School for talented ed and school spring job board. The cost of this, let's see, the cost of the talent ed director's school spring is $23,217.17. Applicant tracking is $5,628.41 for a total of $28,845.58 for the 2022-2023 school year.
That's all our software that maintains our contracts and onboarding documents and our application software.
Okay. Agreement with Power School for student information system software. The cost is $48,281.46 for the 2022-2023 school year. R, agreement with Rick Scott Construction Incorporated for concrete repair work at East Middle School. And the total cost is $33,490. S, agreement with Rosenstein, Fisk, and Gringo for legal services for the 2022-2023 school year. And the cost of that is $10,000.
As needed.
As a, as needed basis, up to, I guess, estimated at $10,000. T, agreement with True Line Striping and Seal Coating to reseal and stripe the Poe High student parking lot. And the cost of that is $46,295. And I guess I have a question. Now, we're going to start that. Are they going to be assigned parking places or some of them going to be assigned certain parking spots?
I believe that's the idea.
We are going to number those parking spots and we're working out a system on assigning maybe our seniors and seniors toward the front of the building or closer toward the Poe High building. We're working on getting some type protocols in place for a parking lot. It starts with striping and numbering.
Okay. So...
Yeah, we're also going to take care of some weight install on that floor.
Pardon me?
We're going to take care of ceiling cracks and take care of that part.
They're going to fix that. Okay, do I have a motion for A through T?
I have a motion for A through T.
Oh, don't make a motion.
Ms. Zimmerstein. Aye. Ms. Truitt. Aye. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Okay, number six, motion and vote to be in executive session for the following purposes. Do we need an executive session?
Yes, we do.
To discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report. To discuss negotiations. To discuss the purchase or appraisal of old property. And to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning any claims and litigation. Do I have a motion for executive session?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Ms. Rowland. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Ms. Zimmerstein. Aye. Ms. Newsom. Aye. Ms. Truitt. Aye.
We're going to return to executive, uh, to open session. Number eight, a recital of the board precedent that minutes of the executive session were kept by, by the board minutes clerk and will remain confidential. Number nine, consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. Okay, just don't have anything. Okay, number seven, new business.
We need to have a motion.
Oh, we, okay. We need a motion for number eight.
I'll make a motion.
Number six.
We need a motion for number nine.
Oh, number nine. That's right. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Truitt. Aye. Ms. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
All right, number seven, new business. Do we have any new business?
No new business.
Okay, a German. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yep. Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Ms. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland.
Aye.
Ms. Truitt.
Aye.